I'm Chastity Holt from the Lincoln County Planning and Development Department. I'm the Community Development Administrator for your CDVG funds. I'm here tonight to have our second public hearing for the 2021 application as well as also have a comments on the modification to the 2020 CDVG CD funds as well tonight. First, I'd like to discuss the 2021 application. Louis Towne the Borough is receiving $140,263 for the 2020 allotment, of which $21,039 is set aside for administration and $119,224 is available for project costs. At this point, what has been identified is a number of streets on the south side of Louis Towne and what we would like to do is have the entire length of Lincoln Avenue, 700 and 800 blocks of South Main Street, the 700 block of South Grand Street, the 400 block of South Union Adder Street, West Fleming Avenue from Main Street to the UGI facility, Washington Avenue from Main Street to South Grand Street, and the 200 block of South Wayne Street. The estimated cost for this project is $312,315. That is more than the one-year allotment of $140,000. So what I am proposing is to do a multi-year project where we will commit actually the 2020 funds that we had initially set aside for the ADA ramps along Fifth Street and we can move those funds into these streets on the south side. We need an additional $91,885 if I didn't bring the exact numbers, sorry. We had set aside for the ADA funds for Liquid Fuels, but it was very similar. It was a very close number. The one difference between the ADA ramps and this is engineering is not included in this amount. So those Town Borough will be responsible for paying for the engineering separately and then use the 2020, 2021 funds and Liquid Fuels. And I think I talked to Lucas. He thinks that's going to take the majority of the going down South Main Street to the right. That should take care of it.
That should take care of everything, I believe.
Yes.
And where we are now to this point, that's.
So that's very encouraging to get one area done.
Yeah, we want to keep everything on the south side, though.
Are there any questions about that project?
I have some questions, but can I set a meeting with you, come up and talk to you?
You sure can.
In my mind, the math doesn't add up.
Okay.
I mean, it's not because it's not right. I just don't understand all the numbers coming from.
Okay.
So I can sit down a few so I can break it down for the council for a longer finance meeting so they know exactly where it's coming from.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
That's true, no problem. Okay. The next item that we would discuss is our budget modification to the 2020 CDVG CD funds. This is the coronavirus cares money that we initially set aside for the laptops for the Lincoln County students. The school district ended up buying the laptops with their own funds. And the project that I'm presenting tonight is the New Vision Senior Net Program that I presented in June at the first public meeting. This is a fair share project that they are looking to establish this senior net program and basically they're going to teach seniors and the visually impaired how to do things with technology, whatever they need to help keep them engaged. They found a lot of issues that they had arisen during COVID, during the isolation and things. The total request from New Visions is $11,381 and the Borough's share, which I got it here, is $2,003.06. Again, it's a fair share project. This would be split between Brown, Derry, and Bramble Township, Louis Towne Borough, and the county. Everybody is on board with this program, so I would ask that as part of your regular meeting that you will pass the resolution first for the 2021 application to put those funds into the streets on the remaining streets on the south side and then adopt the resolution for the CD funds to allow this $2,003.06 to go into that program out of the CD funds.
Chastity, wasn't there more than $2,000, though, that we had gotten for the CD?
Yes, there was.
And don't we need to spend that money prior to the end of?
Next year.
Oh, next year, okay.
Next year, yes. So the total amount that was available was $60,487 and that's why we're only looking at $2,003. Another project that is also we're looking at right now is doing a park on the Fifth Ward project. We found out that we had to do a survey for this area. We have sent, let me think, we had around 270 households and what we're looking at is the presumed service area of those people who have frequented that area for the park. We can do a random sample. We need 55 surveys back. We have sent out two mailings and as of today, we did get one today, we have 11 returned and we've sent two mailings.
So they don't have to be by mail?
They do not have to be by mail. DCD requires two mailing attempts and a third purse or a third attempt is strongly encouraged. We typically do a door-to-door and we let it behind. We typically have a better response on mailings at this point, so we're very discouraged. The one thing that we can do that we did just learn, they've DCD updated their guidance, because I can't remember the exact number, it's around 275 households. We only need 55 responses. We have to do a random survey, so we were able to randomize all these numbers and whenever we, I think we have four that are vacant, so we were able to replace them with the next four addresses.
Okay.
So we can replace whenever we don't get respondents. Problem is we only have a lot of the surveys so far and at this rate, if we don't get more people to respond, we won't give us.
How far, how far up did you go?
Right to, so we went to Laurent Street, North Laurent Street, where it's just starting to turn bend and that's like the end of the service area. So we'll catch everybody on both sides and we'll go all the way down to bypass and we'll go over just before fading.
And their services have self-addressed stand-up lifts.
They do, they do. They're self-addressed stand-up lifts.
That's always a plus to try and get them back anyway.
Yes. There is a letter from the county. Kim drafted a letter as well explaining the project. We really just, we need people to return the surveys so that we can qualify the project.
And what happens if we don't get the required numbers back, then that project's not viable.
Then the survey doesn't qualify.
We can't do that project.
Correct.
You're going to lose that money or find another project.
Yes.
You probably can't tell from the information we have how many of those households have built.
We have no idea. We just had.
A lot of voters are looking to see whether they're coming.
We have addresses based off of the GIS mapping.
Right.
And we just send out to households. So we don't, we have no idea. That's part of, we need to know the number of households. There's a range for your income. I didn't bring a sample survey along with me, but there's a range of your income that you just have to say. We have this many people in the household, my income is below this number, above this number, or below this number, or above this number. And then there's some other qualifying question here on the. Hopefully, people will, if you can encourage everybody, if you receive the survey, please fill it out, send it back.
Would you help me rate Mark? Can you have the door open?
You can just see the craft. I could hear someone talking.
I know what you were getting at, Kim.
But we will be actively looking, you know, we will actively hopefully work with Kim if anybody else is willing to help do door-to-door surveys, if you know people in that area.
Cassie told me that she's going to go door-to-door to help me, so.
She lives there.
Yeah, she said she helped me do that too.
Okay, that would be great. We can discuss that, the logistics of doing that too, then. That should be all I have tonight. Oh, the application for the 2021 application is due to DCD by October 28th. As I said previously, I'm asking council to approve the resolutions for the 2021 application and the budget modifications for the senior net program through New Visions tonight. The commissioners will adopt the budget modification, I actually put on my, oh, you said that's correct, on September 30th because I do have to wait for Bramble approved Thursday night. Brown and Derry will approve Thursday, next Monday, and then the commissioners will meet September 30th. And the commissioners will also approve the 2021 applications by resolution October 7th. Give me about three weeks before the applications do. Are there any questions, concerns, comments?
Anybody in the public have any questions on that?
Thank you for your time. Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Chastity.
Thanks for all the hard work on that, Chastity.
You're welcome.
Meeting may adjourn to the order. The flag.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Dave Campbell.
Casey Goss. Larry Seer.
Here.
Venus Shade.
Here.
Mary Terry.
Mark Terry.
I'm sorry, Mark Terry.
Hi, Mary.
Hey, Mary. Aaron Wilson.
Here.
Bill Wilson.
Here.
Anybody have anything they want to bring before council?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Okay, so my name is Kathy Wilson. I live at 156 West Fourth Street here in Louis Towne. And mayor, I guess I'm going to have to ask you this question because you're in charge of the chief, but I turned in a report of the officer, which I was here about last month, and I have had no acknowledgement of receipt of that. And the officer that I turned it into acted like he had no clue what to do with it. So I would like to know if the chief did receive it or not. Or if we're in the trash.
No, no, that would not happen.
Okay, well, then I'd like to have an acknowledgement of receipt. I simplified my phone call, let's do that. So the other thing then is I understand that there was a webcam of the day that that officer was there. Based on the outcome, I'd like to see that video footage.
Well, I do know that your husband was notified.
My husband wasn't the one who made the complaint. I made the complaint. I am the one who put my phone number on that report.
Yeah, but the, it was asked if you would like to come in too, the two of you.
I was, I would, I told him the same thing I'm going to tell you. I am the one who made the complaint. I am the one who received the verbal abuse and I am the one who should have had that phone call, not my husband. He had nothing in on that.
Well, he was involved in a situation.
He was involved in one from the time before. I had nothing to do with that. So I'm the one who took the time to fill out the form. I am the one who signed the form. I am the one whose phone number is on that form. I am the one who received the verbal abuse. I feel I should have been called, not my husband. Apparently, they must have missed the day in school whenever they taught sex ed because there is a difference between male and female. I am the female who made the complaint. I expect the call. So that's all I have to say.
Do you know, ma'am, how many, did he get any forms back from the other people that were here that night?
I didn't get one form.
The only one he got was from Ms. Wilson.
I didn't even think he got one from her, but I.
I dropped it off to Officer Roberts.
I'll have to check on it. I didn't think that that form came in.
Would you check and see if the other ones turned any in too, please?
He was to be here.
He's in the hallway. I'm tracking, I'm tracking, he did get one form, must have been hers. That's the only one I heard. He did get one form, that's all I know. So it's probably hers.
Do you know for a fact that he's?
Yeah, he said he got one.
And then I misunderstood. Sorry.
No, you're fine, ma'am.
Does anyone else have anything to bring before council?
Brian Rogers is not here.
Okay, then we're going to move on with the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody wants taken out of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made properly. Second, approve the consent agenda. All those in favor give a consent by saying aye. Opposed? Who carries?
First thing is the police station. I received a phone call from the landlord of the police station that we currently occupy. He asked me to address the council to see if you would give any thought to vacating that building and getting out of the lease and going somewhere else. He has, he says he has an option of renting it to somebody else the entire first floor. I told him I'll bring it to council and present it to you. The one question you would have is what's our options? Where would we go? The only option we have right now would be the community center, but that would take some serious modification. I called Eads on Friday. I never got a call back. I know you're back there, Lucas, but it was about that to find out, because I think they did some estimates in the past about what it would cost, so I don't have estimates yet. I couldn't get over Lucas. So the bottom line is that would be an option, but that might be a six-month to a year wait for the renovations to happen.
Well, that'd be my next question. How long does he, would he want the police out of there?
Yeah, that's it, I think, and I don't know. He hasn't returned any of my emails.
Okay, and is the police station currently, anybody want the first floor down?
They, he, I talked to chief. He said that it's the whole first floor. Yeah, we're there, but not the whole first floor is used. Police department has part of it. He wants the whole first floor. So that's FYI for you guys. I'll work with Lucas here in the future about getting some estimates of the timeline for Mr. Hilker, but I just got the call Friday and haven't gotten confirmation.
Yeah, that's two very important things that we need to have. What's his time frame?
And what's the cost?
And what's the cost? Well, here's the other thing too. Are we talking about renovating the entire community center and taking that away from people to have events? Or are you talking just half of the community center? I don't know what, I don't remember. Lucas, do you remember what we, I think it was half, wasn't it, that we looked at modifying?
Yeah, it wasn't going to be the whole space and I don't know how far along in cost estimating we go for anything.
I think it was like half a million dollars to start, but I mean, today's prices are more than what they were two years ago, so that's, I'm sure, inaccurate.
I think, I think what needs to be done is to have the chief and myself be down and look at the building and what's, what's the, and take a look and see what, you know, what we can do and what we can't do with that facility, so, and whether or not we do, the whole, the whole building would be great to have.
Yeah.
Especially since we're not really making any money down here from what I understand.
I think if we, if we could renovate the whole building.
It would be hard to have a police department there and run it out.
Yeah, yeah.
Some kind of social event.
I don't think that would be good.
So, I mean, but.
I think it would rent it less than it is now.
What's that?
I think it would be rented less than that it is now.
Nobody wants the party next to the police.
Of course you don't.
Wow, all the more that it's getting rented and then, of course, in the winter, we have to keep some amount of heat and so on in there.
Cost and timeline, I think, is going to be our bottom line.
Yeah, I mean, it is.
Right. That would kind of make sense to a little building.
Yeah.
Right, and I'll, I'll work with Lucas and the chief's mayor, give you guys a report next month, see if we can come up. And if I can't earlier, I'll send you an email with an update, but that's where we stand right now.
Are we going to try to go back to Chris and see if?
Yeah, I'll go back to Chris. Yeah, I'll go back like the 717th time and see if he'll respond. He only responds when it benefits him, so.
Yeah.
Next thing on the list is CDVG, CD Park. We just talked about that with Chastity, so we're waiting on the survey results on that before we can move forward on that one. ADA lift repair status and anything you have questions on. I have some documents I can show you. Bottom line on that is they haven't started yet. We submitted our deposit back in August and they said they haven't received a check yet, so we're given until Wednesday. And if the check doesn't show up, we're going to cancel it overnight, a check, because they won't start the repair project until they get money from the borough. So we're at the mercy of the post office until Wednesday and then we'll go from there. The dyster panel, that is a $27,000 repair project that needs to be done. I'll show you some pictures. This is the dyster panel, that's why it's $27,000. It's all electrical and it controls that the gas exchange and a bunch of stuff down there. It's outdated and its timeline has been met. And I have a quote here from Gert Fleming, who is our engineer down there and the reasons behind it, et cetera, and the answer right now is $27,000. Do we have it? Yes. So I need permission from Ken.
Is this in the budget?
Yes.
Yes, of course.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so I just.
What is the dyster panel? Where's this at? What building?
Please clarify.
Okay. So are you looking for kind of motion?
Yeah.
If I make a motion, will you approve the $27,000 for place fees?
I second.
Motion made properly. Second question. All those in favor give a consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who carries?
Trying to find my file on here, my, on my information. There you go. Okay. Okay, we have a request from a resident. There was a handicap spot on 24 Catherine Street that the resident's no longer there and they would like to get that handicap parking spot removed.
Wish it council.
It's not needed anymore.
Make a motion and we remove the spot.
Second.
Motion made properly. Second, remove the handicap stall 24 Catherine. Question? All those in favor give a consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who carries?
The next item on here is the request for a handicap parking spot at 211 South Spruce. We looked, there's no other spot. Handicap spots in that area at all, not even close to the house or even on the street. So we do have a request here for that. I just don't want to put it on the screen because of medical reasons, so they do request a handicap spot at 211 South Spruce. I already got with the street superintendent, he checked it out as well, and we're good to go if we get it approved.
Council, please.
I'll make permission. Will you approve the handicap spot at 211 South Spruce?
Second.
Motion made properly. Second, question? All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who carries? Mr. Warner, would you like to speak now? I seen you, I seen you come in. We'll get you taken care of and out of the way.
I was tied up with another issue. Thanks. I'm Vance Warner. I'm the new superintendent. I've been in this district for 23 years as administrator. Actually, I just became a superintendent on Saturday.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, wow, yeah, maybe, okay. One of my items that I really want to believe in is a superintendent is being transparent, okay? And that's why I have Tom White, Director of Bones and Grinds, here. We ended up, the district, we did the merger, we closed Highland Park Elementary School, okay? Everybody knows that, okay? And then the power source and the heating source came from the junior high school. That was severed. So that building's been sitting empty and vacant for all these years and Mr. Remy knows this, so it's been dilapidated. It finally got tore down. Well, independent of that, we've had two business owners or businessmen in the community come to the school district and they volunteered to take on a fundraising campaign to possibly upgrade our athletic facilities. And there is four proposed sites that they're talking about right now. Nothing is on paper yet or anything, and two of them fall within the Louis Towne Borough. So I am just here, I believe that we should involve the other borough and you guys early on. And there's no saying that anything's going to happen here. I just want to be transparent, say, hey, there's been some discussions. One site was, could we upgrade Mitchell Field? Okay, I mean, it's been there for a long time. We actually had a sitting vice president come watch a football game there once. Pretty impressive, okay? The other, we have a lot of green space also at the middle school, the old LA, the Louis Town High School building. So we're also, just because I've already met with the Derry Township, we're also looking at in front of the high school, not making a huge stadium there, of course, in between the junior high and the high school and the other space. And I, the other space is at Highland Park where it used to be. Now, why are we talking about possibility of four sites? Well, we may put a sports stadium, 3,400 people. We're not going to go for one to host playoff football games, et cetera. That's not what we really need in that community. But if we do put in all sports complex, we also would like to put in a turf second field, maybe no lights, okay? We have a lot of community usage out of our fields and if we could have turf. And when you leave this county and you go out and see what some of the other school districts have, and we're a 6A school, there's 60, maybe 60 to 80 6A schools in the state of Pennsylvania, that's it. We run with the big boys. Turf complexes aren't where they should. Yes, I don't want to put anybody down. It's not your fault here by any means. I just wanted to be transparent. This is something that we've had two individuals come talk to the board. They're coming back in October and no one's collected a dollar yet, but they started talking. And then I spoke to Mr. White. I said, you know what? Did anybody talk to Derry Township and anybody talk to you guys? And the answer was no. And that's not going to happen on my shit to superintendent. So I don't need anything from you guys today. I wanted to come introduce myself. If anyone would have a question, Mr. White's here, I'm here, but there has not been a dollar collected yet. It may not come to fruition. I hope it does for our kids and our community, but I just thought I would come here and be transparent and forthright with you guys. If anybody has a question for me, for me or Mr. White, I'd be glad to answer them. Okay, Venus?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you talking the possibility of different areas, you know, an all-sports complex here, upgrading Mitchell Field maybe here, utilizing different spaces differently?
Yes.
So wouldn't have to be all in one spot?
No.
Because I'm imagining, I don't know how you do that.
No, it could, yeah, we don't have that much space anywhere.
Right, right, right.
We, I mean, in a perfect world, we may end up putting a 3,400 all-purpose seating field in front of the high school and then we may ask you guys' permission to put a turf field over here at the middle school or at Mitchell Field. And if, it may not even be a lighted feature, may not be any, any seats, you know, stadium seating at all for that field. It's just for areas where people can come use, they can bring their chairs. We have to start somewhere.
And that would eliminate any hassles with rain.
Yes, with rain, yeah. And they're just, the way, our football games right now in Mitchell Field, the parking for you guys is terrible, okay? So for some things we could do to improve on that, we're going to get one shot, one shot at this. We're also looking at our two, our baseball field and our softball field. You guys remember the, our baseball players that played in Texas? You notice how everything was ash turf on the infield, even when they slid, it's so neat, they slid, boom, right up? That's what we're looking at is doing as well. So turfing those two fields, which they would just stay where they are now at the high school. But, you know, we may look at a sports stadium, you know, boys and girls soccer, you throw in field hockey and football. But, you know, we may look at a sports stadium, you know, boys and girls soccer. You throw in field hockey and football. And then you also have lacrosse now, boys and girls, it's just starting, very new. Now with that field, you need to put nets up. Okay, because, as Mr. Remy would know, that's a liability with the ball is flying and, you know, you start getting better. So, that's just one thing I thought we should come here and just throw around the table for you guys. Any other questions? Mr. White, am I missing anything? Just wanted to introduce myself.
First, I appreciate you taking the time to do that, I think it was enlightening.
And I will keep you guys up to speed. You know, we start doing some things, I would just ask for like five minutes again, to come here and bring up, and I can send, and put it up on the TV, etc. But like I said, we haven't had an architect hired or anything, there hasn't been a dollar collected, but they're ready to start. They're coming on the, this third Thursday of October to address the Milton County School District School Board. Okay, so I'll know that the board says, okay, I know they're looking for grants. They're looking for some large, they're called whales, if somebody gives a large donation, okay? And then they're going to see what the board, our school district, if they're willing to match. If they are willing to match, how much are we willing to match? So, there's a lot of moving parts to this, but at least coming to you guys is not a moving part. I think it needed to happen. So I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chris Verar, thanks for the voice.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. Tax claim bureau.
Nah, President, she's sick out, she's out today. She's sick. Tax claims, she's sick, she said she was sick.
Frankie.
Wake him up. Let's go, Bob.
He's not in the comfy chair.
Okay, in the month of August, fire department ran 25 alarms, consisting of three building fires. A cooking fire, brush fire, three medical assets, seven motor vehicle accidents with injuries. Once again, we was out in two water rescues. We had a carbon monoxide incident, three power lines down, couple smoke odors, a local alarm system malfunction, smoke detector malfunction, and automatic alarm. This wasn't in the month of August, but last week, during the storm, the hurricane, we went into storm mode. All three fire stations tuned up their pumps, rescue equipment, we serviced the boats. And during about seven hour period, we ran 26 alarms, which was associated with the storm. We had wires and trees down, cars and buildings. We also had pumps in service, we pumped out probably two dozen basements over that period of time. So, the fire department's pretty active. And we also had porch collapse off of Fosse Street, where we had porch right off the side of the house. So, and we did have a major fire at the VFW Down House Street a couple weeks ago. It was kind of a tricky fire, and I think the fire marshal figured it was burning probably two to three hours before we suffered notified. We had some trouble finding it, there was four layers of floor in there. The fire was in between floor borders, of course we had to cut everything out to get to the fire. With the electric control board being involved and a large dollar value, I called State Police Fire Marshal into take care of the investigation. And he found it was accidental due to some faulty wiring. Also, another concern I have here for the time being, I just found out in the past couple days, I got three guys out with COVID now, they tested positive with COVID. We're starting to go through that again, that's been, first we've run into this in a few months. I don't know how serious this is going to get, but by these three guys, until they test negative, they're going to be out, they're taking nails and leave the fire department, because we can't have them in the stations and spread them around. I do have some things left over from the last incident we have. We have a limited supply of masks, gloves, sanitations, things of that nature. Tomorrow, I'm going to try to make a connection with Mammoth Fire Restoration Center Hall. They came in last year during this time and sanitized the all three fire stations. Now, they donated that to us, they've done that for free and charged, whether I get them to do that again or not. If there's a possibility that I can't, could I have a permission from you guys, maybe just to get some dollars and see if we can work something out here without them getting shit.
We have the money, it's approved, it's called ARPA, that's what it's for, so we have the money.
You know that basically lines out on the avenue is also doing that, they've done a foot of road on some of our other buildings?
Yeah.
So if Mammoth doesn't work out, he may want to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. That's all I have for now.
Chief, the three that were, that came positive COVID, I don't need to know names, did they receive the vaccination?
I know two of them didn't for sure. The third one was a small kid, so I'm not positive about it.
Yes.
But the other two had jobs, and this was through work, and they tested and showed up positive.
So they already had the vaccination?
No.
Okay.
Well, it seems conclusive with whether you have a vaccine or not, you're susceptible to catching this.
The Delta variant, yeah.
Okay, you're good.
Thanks, Chief.
Did appreciate you keeping that on there, on our website, if I could, we're going to do that for the storm.
Alright, I'll try to keep you up to date on anything we have.
They've done a great job pumping the basements.
Yeah, thanks.
They've did a great job, thanks.
I'll pass that one.
Crazy day.
Alright, thank you.
Mayor.
I just wanted to speak a little bit about the situation with the flood. I felt it necessary as the head of the emergency services in the borough to have a meeting with Phil Lucas. I had the borough manager, both the chiefs there, Ben was there. And everybody that I felt that would have a part if we had to go into any kind of a program like we did the other time. So, about a couple, maybe an hour or so before our meeting, Phil Lucas had gotten a call from the Army Corps of Engineering at Raystown Dam. And it was a very, very important and wonderful call that we got. They were closing the gates at the dam that afternoon, and they were going to remain closed until Friday. And had they not, we would have probably had a major, major situation here. Because the river was going to be going up to 28 feet, and it's 23 and 24 is flooding. And it would have caused a lot of, so we owe a lot of thanks to the Corps of Engineers up there that and they actually did this on their own. That early, they said it was almost unheard of for them to do that. So I was really pleased that that happened, and it saved us from a real disaster here.
But Mayor, I thought that was the purpose behind that dam up there, more so for recreation. I understand by the people that recreate, up there get upset when they lower the lake. But isn't that the purpose of that dam, was to protect the water, the people that live downstream from there?
It is, but depending on the amount of water they get up there, sometimes they can't close the dam that quickly.
Correct, but they know when a heavy rain's coming, you'd think they would drain that water down some in preparation for, then shut the gate and collect it and release it after, but I guess I just have that question for you, because I hear that, well, thankfully they closed the gate, but I always assumed that was exactly why the dam was there.
Yeah, yeah, that is true, and I really can't answer that question, to tell you the truth. But I know, you know, when we had the issue before, you know, there really wasn't a whole lot that they could do to help us. But I know that they did say too, that once the dam was open, that they wouldn't allow the river to go any higher than 19 feet. So that would have been well under the flood level. So, I was really, really pleased about that, and I appreciated everybody that attended the meeting. Because you had to prepare ahead of time for this, even to move our emergency vehicles away on higher ground, you know, there's a lot to go with it. Because we had this problem before, and, you know, it takes pre-planning, and you gotta get on it as soon as you can. So I was pleased with everybody that attended the meeting. I know on the consent agenda, you always have a an approval of the Fame, Fame Minutes, and I don't know if any of you have ever taken the opportunity to go visit the Fame EMS building, to see the work that they do on the board up there, and they're averaging 1,300 calls a month up there. And a lot of the ambulance services around the state are closing, and they oftentimes get calls to go, you know, distances to to aid in, you know, in that problem. And I think it would be a good idea for you to call Pat Schu, the director up there, and make an appointment to go up and see exactly, you know, what is involved in there, and, you know, what the calls, you know, what revenue that the calls generate and what it doesn't generate, and we still have to provide it. So, I would ask that, you know, if we're coming up to budget time here, you know, to go up there and see for yourself, you know, what that facility does. It's amazing. I mean, we're up there for meetings, and that alarm's just going off constantly. So I appreciate if you do that. And also, you know, it's been an open invitation from Dave about coming to the police department to do a ride-in. You know, it's important for members of council to go out and see some of these people, and see what they're responsible for, and how busy they are, and how they protect the residents of our borough and beyond, so I'm just asking that maybe you try to do that also.
They've had 2,700 calls in the last two months. Fame, Fame.
What's that?
They've had 2,700 calls in the last two months.
Right. Yeah, it's amazing what they do.
One of the challenge.
More short staff. Go ahead, I'm sorry, what were you saying?
I was going to talk about another issue with Fame. It's a good thing, but not bad, not one of the problems Fame is having, and they give me a request for additional funding because of ARPA, because that's what it's for, is medicines. It is really hard to get medicines right now, because a lot of the medicines are coming from China. Imagine that. So they've got medicines down there that expired a year or two ago that they're using. And they haven't authorized it to use by FDA, because they can't get any other replacement medicines. So they're in a bind down there for some of the costs on some of this stuff, so we'll quite talk at the next finance meeting.
Yeah, we'd certainly appreciate it if you'd take a look at that, if you would, please. Okay, thank you.
Chief, please report.
Okay, for August, we had 534 calls for service, 46 traffic citations, 27 non-traffic, 54 written warnings, and 427 parking tickets issued. The mental health co-responder program, we received, just received notice this week that the grant will be extended for another year. So we will be continuing that program, and also looking to expand it in other jurisdictions through that grant. We had eight officers in August complete the crisis intervention training. And that was all part of that co-responder grant as well, they paid for all the overtime involved with that. So, as of now, every officer in the department has the CIT training, which is definitely a positive for us. And what that is, is crisis intervention is dealing with mental health issues with people in crisis. It's a 40-hour training course, like I said, every officer in the department now has it. Civil service testing for officer positions will be held on October 24th at Milton County High School at 2:00 PM. Applications need to be submitted by October 15th for anyone who wants to take the test. And you have to at least be enrolled in an Act 120 program, or have completed it, to be able to take the test. And all the information can be found on our website, lowistownpolice.org, if anyone's interested in applying to take the civil service test. And that's all I have for now.
Dave, did you get any of those complaints back, other than from Mrs. Wilson?
Nope, that's the only one I received back.
Okay. Could you tell me, was there any arrests made for fireworks last week?
For fireworks?
Yes.
No arrests that I know of, I know there was at least one incident involving fireworks.
They didn't make any arrests?
No, I don't think there was an arrest made, no.
Okay, thank you. First, initiative there.
Thank you.
And did anybody have any questions for Chief? Okay.
You might recall that a few months ago, Dan Taftich was here with a plan for Sacred Heart Church, a land transfer between them and Mark Severs. Dan contacted Rex and told him that he didn't think that they were going to be able to get the plan recorded within the 90-day window that they got, that they have for approval under the municipality's planning code. But what I told Rex is that under the municipality's planning code and our subdivision and land development ordinance, they do have to record within 90 days. However, under our ordinance, Borough Council may extend the 90-day limit if requested. So, I mean, you can treat, I suppose, Dan's email to Rex as a request for a extension of the time in which to record the plan if you're so inclined.
Why was the plan delayed? Why didn't it get done, I guess?
I honestly don't know. All Dan said is, due to several unexpected issues, it looks like the above plan will not be recorded within the 90-day window.
We first by memory, that's for parking?
It's for a little piece of land, and I think that's what they were going to do.
It's just a small strip, that or a couple cars.
If, if you don't extend it, then they will have to, oh, it looks like Dan did send a letter.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, great. Yeah, if they don't, if you don't extend it, then they would essentially have to go back to the beginning and pay all the fees for a subdivision.
I make a motion, we extend it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a net full of
Do you want to give like 16, 90 days?
I think that's fair.
It's a net full of Sacred Heart, so.
They're requesting a 90-day extension, I say let them have it.
Motion made properly, second question? All those in favor, give your consent to say an aye.
Aye.
Pose. So carries.
The next item is a resolution to dissolve the municipal authority of the borough of Lowistown. Because of the sale of the water system, one of the things that the borough has to do is take action to dissolve the municipal authority. We have a resolution here which says that you'll do that, and authorizes the president or vice president of council and other officers to sign whatever documents need to be done. This won't take place immediately, it'll take place sometime after the sale.
Yeah, except for the 90, the last paragraph, I think, it says it's not.
Right.
Did we get a purchase agreement yet?
Yes, we have reached a final asset purchase agreement. Have I reading that?
No.
I don't know if you've seen it yet, I can email it to you, it's very long.
Isn't it the one heavy signed?
Yeah, yeah.
Wait, it was approved without our consent?
Well, when you did your original motion, you authorized the president to sign all necessary documents. So it wouldn't have to come back.
Did anything in the original MOU change since that signature? Since this council approved the non-binding MOU?
The second one was
Well, the second one was binding.
The second one was binding.
No, it's consistent with the end of
But no, nothing changed from the first non-binding to the second binding?
I think they expect to settle it sometime around the end of September.
So what do you, what do you need from us here, Mark, today?
To adopt this resolution.
And if we don't adopt it today, what does that do? Does that delay?
Well, you won't meet again before the closing, and it should be done before the closing.
So I assume whatever's been agreed upon, in spite of what this council has seen as final draft, is done, is that what you're saying, Mr. Remy?
Well, I mean, basically, yeah. I mean, it's not done-done, it's not, that won't be until the end of the month when they borrow their money.
Well, would you know, off him, what has been changed from the original MOU to this binding memorandum? Because my understanding of there has been changes that I don't feel this council is made aware of fully.
I don't know, no, I don't know what you're referring to.
Was there anything in the purchasing agreement that changed from the memorandum, I understand?
Not that I know of.
What about final payment in the memorandum, I understand?
I didn't think that changed, I thought that
I don't think there's a change.
They never put anything like an amortization schedule or a payout thing, they just left it the original one you guys had.
Frank, Frank Verar was trying to, excuse me, he was trying to get it changed.
But I don't think it changed it.
But they, but they didn't change it.
Didn't change it.
From the MOU that we agreed?
As I understand it.
Yes, it was not, it was not changed from that.
Okay.
I mean, they did some changes like D to the A to N, that kind of stuff, but nothing as far as the values and the numbers and stuff that I'm cracking.
No, when we, when we agreed to the final, then that's when Frank came in, talked, he talked to you. And was trying to get us to change it, because if we were losing it.
But that wasn't, that was a change to what we originally agreed upon, is that what you're saying, Frank? Right, Frank was the gentleman. Right, Frank was suggesting.
Yeah, I think Frank essentially wanted another payment.
Yeah, he wanted, yeah, he wanted another payment at it, he wanted a payoff at it, he wanted an amortization schedule, he wanted a bunch of accounting stuff added, is what he wanted. I'm not saying he's wrong, because that's what he wanted, so I don't think any changed though.
They didn't change anything.
And when you say they, Larry, you're talking to municipal authority?
Right.
Label, okay.
And Mark, he didn't, he didn't change anything. Now, this one here, I put this in here because Mark sent me an email, can you please add this to the agenda? So, this was, like, I wrote this dissolution up, this is something, the solicitor wants to do.
Well, I, I mean, like I said, I just thought the timeframe was kind of tight, and I just like to make sure, you know, this, I mean, this council pretty much knows, this seems like the more expensive route that we're taking to dissolve and go to a Mifflin County authority, but what they're there, I'd just like to see that, since, you know, it seemed like the voters voted and they wanted a Mifflin County Water Authority, I just wanted to make sure the transaction just went. According to the MOU that we agreed upon, I would propose...
And as far as I know, it is...
As far as my knowledge or whatnot.
This is kind of part of it, too.
Right.
Because we even, we even questioned the fact about obtaining that property down there, you remember when they...
Right, that was some question.
Remember, they came back and they said no, because that, we didn't accept that when they offered it, so it went back to the...
So, it pretty much stayed intact?
Yes, yes, right.
The question I have for you, Mark, so, is, they voted this, they approved this, approve, let's just say they approved it. You said the final closing, the final closing would take in October, take place in October?
Septi, end of September, beginning of October.
And then six months later is like when it's finally done, according to this, it's finally, so they have six months to close out, the borough and they will have six months to close out all transactions that are still open, that kind of thing.
Right, they, I guess they have, you know, they have to transfer pensions and contracts
Right, and I think that's why, if you look at the thing on here, in paragraph three, it breaks it down, that's where, that's where the six months comes from, when I read this, I'm pretty sure that's where this is.
So, I'm just looking for a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Sure, second.
I'll second.
Motion made properly second to adopt the resolution. Question? Roll call, please.
Larry Seer.
Yes.
Venus Shade.
Yes.
Mark Terry.
Yes.
Aaron Wilson.
Yes.
Bill Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three, the river property, can we do that executive session and then come back in if...
Yeah, that's fine. I don't think there really is gonna be anything we can do right now, is there?
Yeah, it's not, it's not gonna take me, yeah. The ordinance change, that refers to something I sent around on Friday, having to do with parking of vehicles in certain places. What's proposed out of law and ordinance is changing the existing ordinance to provide parkings prohibited. In certain instances specifically, you can't leave any mechanically inoperable vehicle, any vehicle without a current registration, or any vehicle without a current inspection sticker on any public street, alley, or highway in the borough, any metered lot in and by the borough, or un-metered lot in and by the borough. And we set forth a sliding scale of fines, starting...
Fifty bucks.
Starting down at 50, going up to 150, and then topping out at 300 for a third or subsequent offense, with 15 days in between each one. So, this is to address, you know, what the, what the Law and Ordinance Committee saw as a problem of unlicensed, or uninspected, unregistered, or inoperable vehicles on burrows streets.
I made a motion, I accept it.
So, that would be to publish it for consideration next month?
For advertising, right?
Right, okay.
Motion made proper, is your second?
I'll second.
Property second, questions? All those in favor, give their...
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
I know it doesn't cover vehicles that are sitting on, I'm getting complaints about vehicles sitting on private property that are filled with garbage, they have no license, no inspection sticker, nothing, and people are...
Isn't that a common issue?
Well, it is, but you kind of, you know, there's nothing we can do about it. I don't think there is, you know?
Yeah, there's, there's a...
Isn't there something, isn't there something in the borough ordinance now about if it's, if it's...
Yes, if it causes a health issue.
If there's animals or something getting in it.
Because we looked at that at the Law and Ordinance meeting.
Just being unlicensed on private property, unregistered, whatever, isn't a problem per se that we can do anything about, and it would have to be otherwise a health and safety violation.
But the trash, it's either the...
Right, that could bring vermin, whatever.
If it's drawing like rodents, cats, or something that are living in it, or, you know, something like that, then we can do something about it.
Right, but any, any vehicle that does not have garbage in it, it's just a junk car sitting with weeds around.
It could have broken glass that could cut people, you know?
I think the weeds have to be maintained as well if I maintain the ordinance correctly, so if you have four-foot weeds...
There's nothing at all we can do with getting that vehicle off of it.
Yeah.
That's what I thought, okay, thank you.
That was not my question.
Yes, it was, you know it was.
Thank you.
My, my question was...
Any other questions?
I have one.
Oh, okay.
Seriously, it was not my question. This is probably more for the chief, can we go back to the ordinance?
The one we just looked at?
Yes, please. Oh, forget it, he's not...
No, I got it, right here, right?
Okay, so, can you take me, okay, let's say that I've got an unexpected broken-down car in the lot up here, okay? You call me up, am I gonna get a chance to remove that vehicle prior to you giving me a fine?
We usually do try to contact the owner first and say, this vehicle's a problem, it needs to be moved, and if they don't move it, we get a citation if, if we can.
Okay, how, how long are we giving them? Because it's not in here how long I have to move my vehicle after I've been notified that it needs to be moved, or...
Well, I mean, that's on the officer's discretion, and according to the ordinance, they could be cited right away, but as a courtesy, we usually try to contact the owner and say, look, this vehicle's an issue, it needs to be moved. Then if they don't move it, we can take further steps.
And just, what happens when they don't move it? We get a fine, they still don't move it, so I get another fine, I still don't move it.
After 15, after 15 days.
After 15, right, I understand, but what's that, I still don't move it, then what?
And another fine.
And then what?
They're looking to get their attention at that point.
Okay, but here's my thought, here's my thing, if my broken-down vehicle is sitting in a lot that I can't afford to fix my broken-down vehicle, I sure as heck can't afford to pay the fines for the broken-down vehicle, and I get a personal responsibility, vehicles cost money, yes, but aren't we then just adding more money to someone who can't afford to pay to get their vehicle fixed anyway?
Well, have it towed into your yard.
What if I don't have a yard, Larry?
Find a neighbor or something that'll leave you...
I don't think my neighbors like me that much, but anyway.
Well, I understand that.
But you know what I'm saying? I mean, at, at some point here, what if we, I don't know, are we gonna impound it at some point? Are we gonna, you know, tow it away?
This ordinance doesn't address that.
I know, so you're just gonna find these people...
Well, at some point, it might be considered an abandoned vehicle, I think at that point it could be towed.
But aren't there, because we talked about that, Law and Ordinance Committee, and I know there's issues with that, right, to chief, right?
Yeah, with abandoned vehicles, I mean, if it's parked in front of the residence, it's not abandoned because it's their vehicle.
Right, so, I, I get the whole point of this, and I, I do understand, I drive around and I see those same vehicles, there's one up on Stratford Hill right now, that blue van that's axle's broken, and that's not moving, and it's been there for a long time, so I understand the point, but what I worry about is adding dollar after dollar after dollar to someone, and if this, if, you know...
I think that's the, why the idea was to make the first fine lower, so you can get someone's attention rather than be strictly punitive on it.
I understand, and I, all I'm saying is, you know, if I, I would love to know why that blue van's still sitting there. Is it a matter of we can't fix it, we don't have the funds to fix it, so giving these people fine after fine after fine isn't necessarily the answer, so to speak.
Right, nor is allowing the van to sit there for years and years.
The idea is just a motivation for them to do something, or, you know, either get it fixed or junk it, you know, have someone come and take it, get junk price for it, or whatever.
Well, and that's fine for all of us sitting around this table that have jobs and have the means to do that, but for those people in the borough that don't have the means to do that, and there are more that don't, they do, it's an issue.
Then what would, I guess...
I don't have an answer, don't ask. You're gonna ask what the solution is, I don't have one. I said I understand the problem, but I also understand that problem, so...
Okay, question? Any other questions?
Comment?
All those in favor, give their consent per se an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carries.
So, advertise that for next month's meeting.
Roger that.
Thanks.
Unfinished business, MCMA applicants, appointments, three of them. Make a couple motions, Mel Parker for one year, Barry Barker for the free year, and Jeff Rocker for the five year.
Did we have four applicants?
Yes.
Okay.
Those Mel and Parkers?
Mel Parker for one year, Barry Barker for three years, and Jeff Rocker for five.
Yep.
Is that right, Bill?
Yep.
Anybody else have any, but they want, the, the other application we got was from Jones Marter.
This is the last one there.
Yeah, yeah, right there.
Won't they pick them up at the courthouse anyways? We're not picking them probably, they're gonna...
Well, they, they have to be, they have to be approved by the, by the commissioners, but we...
We, we give them the names and they say...
We give them the names, and if there be a problem, they're gonna leave us knowing, and we have to make another point. Anybody make a motion to accept those three appointments?
No, didn't.
Oh, okay, is your second?
I'll second the three appointments.
Question? All those in favor, give their consent per se an aye.
I'll go.
Opposed? So carries. Police Advisory Committee.
One applicant, Jim Tipping.
Who?
Jim Tipping, he's the, things building, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
He's got his whole application here.
I made conversion to appoint him.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made properly second to appoint him to Police Advisory Committee? Any questions? All those in favor, give their consent per se an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carries. Okay, now, we need a motion to adopt the resolution for the CDBG Southside Paving Project that Cindy was here for.
Cassidy.
Cassidy, yep.
Or Cassidy.
Second.
Same move.
Motion made properly second, questions? All those in favor, give their consent per se an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carries.
I wanted to say, I'm sorry.
Need, need another motion for the, the CDBG CV funding, that was the approval for the...
Parking unit.
Seven minutes.
Second. Motion made properly second, questions? All those in favor, give their consent per se an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carries. Anybody have anything they want to bring up for, Cap?
I got something for Chief.
Okay.
How are we making out with the guy that hit our van from our house?
He was cited.
What, that?
He was cited with three citations.
Who's gonna pay the bill for the mayor?
That would be up to them to have restitution order with court.
How are they gonna know, no one contacted us or anything? How would they know what's back?
We were talking to Officer Lynch, that was his investigation.
Okay. Anybody else have a...
Sorry, I do. And it's only because with the new Sunshine Act, I have a few things that came up since the agenda came out, and the council, under the new rules, has to vote on whether you want to hear them or not. And then once I bring them up, you discuss it, vote on it, and then I got 24 hours to go back and change the agenda and address the issue. So, the first thing that came up, if I may...
Sure.
We need to discuss, I need to know if you want to discuss it, is the church today dropped off a facility use request form for a block party for September 26th. The problem is, the next council meeting is in October, so, I need to know if you want to discuss it and approve this or not.
I'll make a motion, we discuss it.
Second.
Motion made properly second, question? All in favor, give their consent per se an aye.
Aye.
Carries.
All right, so what you see on here is his application fee, the only thing he doesn't have on here, he paid his fee, is his insurance, so I gave him a copy of the insurance form, he's going back to the church to get the insurance, so he doesn't have that yet, but he is gonna get it.
I'll make a motion, we approve it contingent upon insurance.
Yep, and then here's the street that they want to block off, I'll get with our guys and help.
Motion made properly second, question? All those in favor, give their consent per se an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carries.
Okay, the next thing is, the Chamber of Commerce is having a fundraiser to raise money to improve the borough's, the cemetery the borough's responsible for, the Ames Cemetery, the Black Cemetery, they're trying to raise $14,000, they briefed the finance committee already on it, one of the committees we had, they just want the borough's approval to continue doing that into the future. They don't want to put money into the cemetery without the borough's approval, so I need to know if you would like to discuss that.
I'll make a motion, we discuss it.
Second.
Motion made properly second, question? All those in favor, give their consent per se an aye.
Aye.
So, here's, sorry, here's the documents, here's the things they want to do, they've got a really good plan laid out on it, they're contacting some people that are coming here, I think in October, September, October...
First weekend of October.
Yeah, to give classes on how to restore gravestones, so this is something they're not taking lightly, this is a good project for the cemetery, they're trying to get some benches put in there, a, like, overhead sign for the cemetery to upgrade it, we're gonna work with them on this.
Again, my question is, what cemetery is this, one down on...
The Cross Shoes.
By, by, okay. You know, you go down to the dock, it's right there, right outside.
It's not the St. Mark Cemetery, correct?
Right, it's the smaller, it's the smaller, so they just want borough's approval to continue with the fundraiser and to help with the cemetery.
Okay. Anything else under public comment?
I get a vote on it.
Oh, I'll make a motion, we do that.
And that we did. Okay, all those in favor, give their...
Yeah, they voted to discuss it, now they're voting to approve it.
Oh, okay. All those in favor, give their consent per se an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carries.
Uh, there's another one, I think this is more Goose Day...
You got any more?
Yeah, I do, I'm telling you, this, this whole 24-hour thing with everything that comes up, Goose Day 5K.
I vote we discuss it.
Second.
No, it's the way, that's the way to handle it.
All those in favor, give their consent per se an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, discuss it.
They got everything in, here's the route, they do this every year, we're ready to support them on it, we just need your permission to do it.
They've got insurance and everything?
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve it.
Second. Motion made properly second, approve it, question? All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carries.
And one last thing. Hey, it's your thing.
You're person the mayor.
I know, sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean a displeasure. Okay, last thing before we go move on with him. Hey, we had a meeting, one of the streets meetings about requesting no parking signs on South Pine between Feeder Avenue and Chestnut Street, and I know there's numerous council members in that meeting, so I just need approval for, so you need to discuss it, about putting no parking signs on that narrow street to block, so it doesn't block traffic.
I'll make a motion, we discuss it.
Okay.
Second. Motion made properly second, discuss it, question? All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So, the committee recommended the approval for no parking signs, so I need you to make a vote on that.
I'll make a motion, we put up the no parking signs. Do you have the pictures, Ken?
I, I have one right now.
There's one block.
It's, it's just right there, between those houses, it's a real short block, yep, it's real short, um...
Right where that, there's a car parked there, see, and if there's one on the other side, you, you... But all the, all the properties, the two properties, there's only two properties involved, and both of them have parking in front of their house.
There's parking in their house.
That's the back of the one house, that's the front of the other.
But people park in the street and you can't get blocked.
Is that a street sweeper night, though?
That's all the time.
No, 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 that's all the time, yeah.
Especially a street sweeper night, so...
If you have two, if you have two vehicles passing one...
You know, there's one parked over here, it's definitely turned off, so...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not affecting anybody to afford parking in front of their house or anything.
Are you gonna do it as a temporary, do we need to change the ordinance, or does the ordinance already provide for new parking, and you just need signs?
Oh, now I feel like an idiot, I think you just need the signs put up.
I thought we just needed signs as well.
All right, I just wanted to check.
But it, I mean, that makes it lawful, but they're not allowed to park there once the tide drops.
Correct, yeah. I wouldn't put it up there if it was too late to...
All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carries.
Back to you, Randy. Yeah, sorry.
Anybody else have any public comments before we go into executive session? The cabinet meeting is adjourned, we're gonna go into executive session.